Let me see if I started the document a while ago. I had, I just had to go back to like, we were having meetings there. I'm like, oh, let me go look at that.
Six oh, sorry.
We all set? Okay, call the Tremont Planning Board Agenda. We'll get to that later. Of Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, order at six oh three. Role call, we have Brett Witham, myself, Mark Good. We have Fescott, Ben Harper. And 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 our CEO.
He's our enforcer. You're the enforcer?
I guess I'm gonna have to.
And we don't have Renee, and she's notified Angie she wasn't gonna be here tonight. So I'll take a motion to excuse her.
I'll make a motion to excuse Renee.
Second.
Okay, a motion second on table to excuse Renee. All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody see a need to adjust the agenda?
I don't, so.
Okay, let's move right along. Minutes, January 28th, 2025, look fine to me.
Didn't see anything.
I make a motion to accept the minutes presented.
I'll second.
Motion second on the table to accept the minutes of, approve the minutes of January 28th. All in favor? Okay. And all business review and discuss proposed solar definitions. Angie came up with some proposed definitions. And so did Brett. Find Angie, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
That's all ready to go with Angie's.
I think it's fine. I think it's, well, it's, it's the same thing, right?
Right.
Accessory to permit residential use of structure. Accessory to permit commercial use of structure. The only piece I think that's maybe not there is, I think I added this.
You explicitly said about the net energy billing program.
That, that's right.
Yeah, that's the only difference that I could see.
I just said that, you know, nothing in the definition of either commercial or residential is intended to prohibit the owner of an otherwise compliant commercial or residential system for participating in the state's net energy building program to the extent that the system generates excess electricity not used on the onsite commercial or residential use. So I added that fitting there. The other way to do it, Angie's saying, you know, it's good, same, same conceptually, same thing.
Right, she does mention accessory in there, so. So my question is, do we need the explicitly say the net energy billing part? And we could just add that, if so, we could add that right on to Angie's definition.
I don't think you need it. Well, there we go.
You don't think you need it? Well, thanks for your work. Anybody else, hold on a second, anybody else have any comments?
It was just, it was one of the things we kept hearing from people.
Yeah. Well, I, I think what Angie came up with doesn't, you know, it doesn't prohibit that.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Yeah, I mean, the net energy billing thing's subject to change anyway, so, you know, it, it may be better not even have it in there if they change the name or something like that. If you put something that's.
Yeah, then we'd have to change the, oh, yeah.
Good, good, hey, less is, less is more.
Sometimes, yeah. Yeah. Angie, any comments?
Uh, the only thing is, under residential solar energy system, I forgot the last sentence, but it doesn't change anything. I'll add it back in, obviously, but I forgot that our SES can be up to a total of 2,000.
Oh, okay, I didn't notice that, I thought that was on purpose, yeah, okay.
I just left that sentence off when I cut paste. But that was not.
Yeah, yeah, we just gotta add that in.
2,500 square feet, okay. I'd like to, Kevin, when do you guys need stuff from us to get it on the warrant? I forgot to ask Jesse today.
The dates?
When?
Are you asking about dates?
Yeah, like, yeah. To get something on the, an ordinance change on the warrant for this year's May Town meeting. I know in February sometime, you guys need it by then. So your next meeting or, or maybe even in March? We've always said February, but I think you can get in March.
We have meetings every week in March because of the budget and all that anymore. So I would say probably by mid-March, probably.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I hate, I hate to say that, because I'm not the guy to keep track of the dates, but it seems so, it's like, that still leaves a couple months to get posted.
Do we have to have a public hearing on it? And the SLUT board also has to have a public hearing on it?
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing on any ordinance changes, isn't it? But it can't be a joint.
Okay.
Hearing, I believe.
Do you ever hold your public hearing first and then they?
Usually we hold that first.
That's the way we've done it.
Recommend a recommendation to, okay.
Good point, Ben, I forgot about that. I'd like to get this on the warrant this year, if possible.
I think the other issue is, is getting it to the printer too. They're having it printed.
Well, until they actually approve the warrant, it's not gonna go to the printer, so we have plenty of time for that, yeah.
But that also figures into the timeline.
Yeah, 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 that's true.
I know we're still dealing with budget stuff, and we're, we're not expecting the school budget to be coming in finalized until sometime in March, or early March.
Thank you. So why don't, I'll take a motion to approve Angie's proposed language for the solar energy systems with the amendment that it includes, the residential includes the 2,500 square foot, what is it? 2,500 square feet in surface area, can be up to a total of 2,500 square feet.
So move.
Second.
And send it on to Selectment for inclusion on the warrant, okay. So, okay, so we have motion second to do that, right? Okay, all, any discussion? All in favor? Or nothing, okay. Who's easy enough?
Name his last words.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving right along, I believe our code enforcement officer has, of course, she stapled this together, I've got it all here, but proposed amendments to the floodplain language. I thought it looked great except for five little things there, Angie.
Five little things?
Five little things, that we live in Tremont, not Trenton.
Oh. Oh, yeah.
There's five, she did.
Five times?
The last, yeah.
I run right over that, I do that all the time. Type Trenton instead of Tremont, or the other way around.
At, after our last town meeting, there was a photo of taken from here that ran in one of the local newspapers, I won't mention, where they said, and it was Pete Madera, and they said that it was the Trenton Town Meeting, and they're right behind us. Tremont. Anyway.
Apparently we have a different harbor master recording the last paper too, than I thought we did.
What's that?
Apparently we get a different harbor master now, than I thought we did too. It doesn't matter to like us right too.
I'm glad I never made any mistakes. Discussion, what do you got, folks, think of this. Angie, you wanna explain anything? Give us a brief overview of what you've done here?
Yeah, the first two sections are from the subdivision ordinance. And like I said before, instead of talking about what standards someone needs to meet, I think it's just better to refer directly to the floodplain management ordinance is where someone would find.
As we talked about in our last meeting, that made a lot of sense.
And then the last two were from the land use ordinance. And again, it's really the same thing, I actually copied the language straight out of the floodplain management ordinance that talks about, you know, before deconstruction and development, you know, you have to comply with all the standards in the floodplain management ordinance. So you just go there to find what the standards are. And that's really it.
Folks?
I think it looks good.
Seems easy enough. I'll take a motion to also approve this and send it on to Selectment for inclusion on the May warrant with the amended amendments that all references to the town of Trenton be changed to the town of Tremont.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second on the table, all in favor? Ben, we might get you home to see them find their treasure tonight. And our code enforcement officer has been going through the ordinances and finding a lot of things that need to possibly be changed. And in many cases, not possibly have to be changed. Angie, do you wanna?
Sure.
Go over some of these?
Yeah, so.
As soon as I find them here.
You don't spend a whole bunch of time on it, but I wanted to just kinda go through some of the areas that I've identified that either be updating or reorganization, just to make the ordinance clearer and more user friendly. Some of the items are housekeeping items, some of them are a little bit more complicated, and I think they're gonna require more conversation with the planning board and the public. You know, I'm interested to hear what some of the issues are that the board has seen in the past that they think needs to be, you know, looked at. I also believe that, you know, the foundation of the ordinance needs to be strong before we start adding on to it, so, you know, some of the things are just formatting and just reorganizing things so that the foundation of the ordinance is really sturdy before, you know, we go on to some of the bigger things. One of the things that I had done that I put on your desk actually was creating a template for the standards for each zone. The current zones are not consistently numbered, they don't all have things in the same place, so this format would organize each district in the same way, so, you know, lot standards is in the same place, structure standards is in the same place, and it would just keep things consistent. And then, let's see, let's. Yeah, just, I mean, a lot of basic cleanup. I can go through these pretty quickly, I need some notes. So, and actually, I have some, a couple of questions, or I need some clarification on a few things, if, if we can come to that today. So for example, on page 79, we have a definition of multi-use residential. And the way it reads, I would assume it's intended to be three units or more, and that your single and two-family is a separate use, but I think it actually says something to the effect of that the structure shall contain no less than two dwelling units. So is it intended that a multi-unit residential is only two units? Not three or more? Because in other places in the ordinance, we talk about single and two-family dwelling, which to me seems different than a multi-family dwelling.
So the definition I have, it's a residential structure or structures having two or more dwelling units in the aggregate on a single lot, provided that no structure shall contain less than two dwelling units or more than 10 dwelling units.
But if you go to your chart, in table one, you specifically talk about one and two-family dwellings, and then you talk about multi-unit residential. So I'm, if somebody wants to.
In the land use table you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I wasn't sure if really multi-unit residential is intended to be three or more, and one and two is separate. So we don't have to actually decide tonight, but this is one of those things, in order to correct it, I need to know what was really intended. Was it supposed to be three units or less? So we can take time and think about it and come back to it another time.
I have no idea, I mean, it's been on, in the ordinance forever, so who knows what the the people that came up with this thought. Yeah, you're saying two or more dwelling units, and you're, you're saying under 13 principal structures and uses A, because it says one and two-family residential, including driveways. So that would be like a duplex.
Right, like on your definition, it says two units is a multi-unit.
Yeah. You know, the land use table was updated. Katie was doing that. And so that would have been.
May 13th, 2024.
Yeah, okay. I wonder what the old one said, was there something that didn't? You have the old one?
I might.
What? I'm wondering if something skipped there.
Here's 2020.
Okay.
July 2020.
Okay, that would be 13A.
Okay, one.
Well, maybe it's, yeah, right there, yeah.
Multi.
One and two-family residential, including driveways. Then multi-unit residential. Yeah, it's the same.
She made it bigger, because of all.
To me, a duplex is multi-unit residential, right?
It could be, but I guess let's make the language everywhere say the same thing, so.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, as a definition, duplex is multi-unit residential.
I don't think you have a definition of two-family.
Well, it's written multi-unit residential, having two or more dwelling units.
Right, I just mean, you also refer to a term called single family and two-family, so.
I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, maybe the two-family.
I, I just think, I think 13A is in the table wrong, is my guess.
Yeah.
I don't know what a two-family residential is.
Was it supposed to maybe refer to having two separate houses on the same lot?
Including driveways, so you've got multiple driveways, I guess. Including driveways. The purpose of the table, I'm trying to see, the purpose of the table is to indicate who can do what, right?
Yeah. Who, who gets to prove it or whatever, yeah. See, and, and the fact that, that in most cases, the CEO can, well, in all cases, except one, the CEO can approve one and two-family residential, including driveways. Where the, how do I, basically, it's good.
Should it just be residential, and what is a two-family residential?
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, is it like two separate houses on the same lot, okay? Like an accessory structure.
Right, but I think that should be multi-unit.
Yeah, because, yeah, multi-resident, it says structure or structures, yeah.
Does need to be cleaned up, yeah.
Yep. I don't know, I don't know if we're gonna be able to figure this one out tonight.
No, but it's fine.
Well, recall though, that the table, the definitions existed before the table.
Right.
Somebody created the table. So to me.
The table's probably.
Right, I mean, the definitions should be the, the truth, the truth. And the table needs to follow the definitions. So if there's some inconsistency between the table and the definitions, the table's wrong.
Okay, and, and you're right, I can remember, we didn't have a table for long, longest time.
Definitions.
Yeah.
To go to the table to find out where to go to the definitions.
Table was put in there to make it easier.
And ever since, we've had more problems.
We're gonna care about the table a lot tonight.
You know, we're getting rid of the table.
We love the table. All right, well, we can, we can move on.
Okay.
We'll readdress that one.
Okay.
The next one was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this one's gonna go.
Moderate to complicated.
Yeah, this is obviously gonna require some more conversation, and, you know, I think it's, there's decisions that need to be made, the boards can write in the language, like, is this supposed to be a code officer permit or planning board? And we are being appealed again for, actually, I forgot, I'm not sure what the subject, but.
The land thing?
Right.
Yes.
That would be another case, but, yes, so.
You say there's gonna be another one?
Pointy head in.
Yeah.
Pointy head in.
Like the fights, it's good stuff.
So.
You know, we should have just said no, and voted on the word no.
I wasn't here, I don't know what you got to say.
Ed Bear said when he laughed, that we had answered her the question.
Well, yeah, we knew that was gonna be appealed.
Yeah, so we don't need to.
That's okay. Win this one.
This is such a contentious, yeah. Definitely needs to, we don't want.
This basically is set up for, if somebody wanted to bring a food truck to the town dock for Bass Harbor Days, and doesn't really address the use of a food truck that, on somebody's property, stays there. I mean, the quiet side airstream there operates as a food truck. It's not a food truck, it doesn't move, it's, it's a takeout restaurant, in my mind.
It could move.
Yeah. But, but, but you look at our definition here of these, it says itinerant. That means it's gotta move. But, but we don't define how often that it must move.
And how far?
Yeah, for how far, yeah. Move three feet, yeah, we moved it, yeah, good point.
So that's one that, you know, I think we need to continue talking about and determining what, you know, what are the policies that you want to see around this type of use?
Yeah, I, yeah.
We talked a little bit about it when the land thing came up, but not a lot.
Right, well, they have been approved for a food truck, and it's getting appealed, and the appeals board is going to hear it later on this month. Yes, yeah, that's, to me, this is a high priority, before we get more of them.
I gave it a one.
Okay.
No, I gave it a five, sorry.
Five is high, yes, okay.
Okay.
Okay. What, what do you suggest? Are you gonna work on some, come up with some ideas you want us to?
I think I need to come up with some questions for you to answer, and then, once, I think we know some of the answers, then we can start rewriting the ordinance the way we think it should be.
Does it make sense to differentiate between what I first mentioned, like, a food truck coming to, like, Bass Harbor Days for, let's say, a day or two event, as opposed to one that might be more semi-permanent? Let's put it that way.
Well, I was trying to think of ways to write something that basically says it doesn't sit on private property for extended periods of time.
Right.
And it's truly there for an event or.
Special events, needs permitted, you know, that way you know what's going on.
Otherwise, it's like a takeout restaurant, and we should consider it like that, yeah.
I mean, that's fine, if that's been allowed use, and they're permitted for that property.
Yeah.
You got a killer food options up here.
It's all about.
What, what food options? There's Hanson's, there's the quiet side.
We should create a food truck park.
Well, that's, I was gonna mention that, some towns, in fact, Don Southern, Wells, has a food truck park. Okay, and they have like a dozen food trucks there with all kinds of different food, and you can go there and wander and get what you want.
Does the town own the property?
I think they do. Yeah, I, I, maybe not, maybe not.
You would be opening a whole new can of worms.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I think we should move on.
Yes.
Before we get in more deeper trouble here.
We can skip the next one, because we just talked about that.
Yep.
Also, I noticed you have an appendix A that's behind the definitions, and it talks about, penalties for clearing of vegetation. And it just makes sense to me that that should probably be moved to the section that talks about.
Wherever it belongs.
Clearing for vegetation, nobody's gonna look in the back of the ordinance to find something.
That was a, that was an easy cop-out way to stick it up, to add it at some point.
But, but it has a section number that doesn't, it's not relevant to any.
Section 15S.
Yeah, it's S, re-vegetation requirements, but there's no letters in the front, so I don't know where that came from.
Well, that makes sense.
There are, you know, that said, let's see.
Where's the appendix?
Yeah, it's only referenced once in the document, it's referenced under, it's referenced under.
Page 85.
I don't think we've ever.
Piers?
Gone that far.
We don't think we've ever used the appendix.
It's on page 30.
We need an appendectomy. What page is it on?
85 of 88.
The appendix, right?
Appendix.
I mean, the reference to the appendix.
Oh, so.
The reference to the appendix.
Page 36 is clearing of removal of vegetation. So it seems like it should be at the end of that standard.
36. Refering standards, yeah, so the only other place I see it, I don't know, it's up, it's up under section Q on page 30, like, Piers Docking Structure of Warfs, and then you scroll down as standards, and it talks about removing vegetation below the normal high water line. So it's very, it's a very.
What, is this a state requirement? DEP Chapter 1000, then? Yeah.
It's probably straight from the guidelines.
Yeah.
And it looks like it's their language that they probably require us to put in our ordinance. ordinance. Let me just put it there.
Yeah, it's specifically referenced under section Q. It's on, I have page 32. What is the version? It's May 13, 24 that we're looking at.
Yeah. What page is it?
32 of 88 is Q, Piers, and then you go down to page 33.
I see.
And there's a vegetation piece about revegetating when you de-vegetate in the area that's on by the ocean effectively, so I think it's. I wonder if it's, let me go back to the appendix.
Yeah, you're right. So it's referring to, it's funny, section 15S, appendix A. There's no section 15S.
Yeah, so it's really about, it's actually about the, somehow, something to do with the water, like.
Yeah, in accordance with main DEP.
By the ocean.
Chapter 1000, section 15. So they're referencing.
Yeah, so I would say, you just take that.
And put it up there. Just put it up, yeah.
Put it where? On which page then? Where under?
33, where it is now. It's kind of the only reference.
Okay.
Because it actually is specific to that situation.
That's an easy thing to do.
Yep.
And it's something we could actually go for change this year.
Yeah, that's very easy.
And there.
Yep.
Oh, man, the zoning map is off.
Is this, would you like a motion? Or wait to, till the actual change is made?
If you want to, you know what, why don't I just plan, if you want to make a motion or whatever for me to bring back language for next time, and then you can make a motion if you want to. Then you actually have a document to vote on.
Well, if, if that's the case, we should wait till we get through all of them.
That's fine.
And then, one, instead of separate motions.
Okay. So, yeah, the map.
Zoning map.
I know it's not a great topic there, and I circled a couple of areas that I thought were just helpful to see. The 250-foot district extends far beyond 250 in several districts, but not everywhere. So I didn't understand if that was done intentionally. I mean, if you look at the blue one, sort of here in the middle.
Yes.
You have lots that aren't even anywhere near the water, better yet, but are under harbor shoreline.
Is that a defined, is that like a defined?
Yeah, I think Larson was even talking about that before he left, yeah. In, in that blue zone there, did he?
I have a coffee machine at the office, a colored coffee machine. That enlarges and reduces.
So you want to.
So you can.